Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Haddon.
Here.
Mr. Berkovich.
Here.
And Mr. Snow is absent. Is Mr. Snow out there?
He's absent. With excuse.
I will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on October 1st, 2020.
So moved, second.
Clerk, will you please call the roll? Mr. Teedman.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Berkovich.
Yes.
We have three agenda items tonight and one and three. Okay, never mind. We have three agenda items tonight and if the applicant for item number two is here, I'd like to get that one out of the way if we could. It is, uh, number two.
Yes, she is here. Let me find her on the list.
In the meantime, we would need to take that off the table.
Can I get a motion to remove from the table?
Motion to remove from table, second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Teedman.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Berkovich.
Yes.
Number two is a miscellaneous review to transfer a conditional use permit at 7471 Tyler Boulevard, Unit F. That applicant is here. Please state your name and address for the clerk and tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good evening. Uh, my name is Cynthia Brookins. The address is 7471 Tyler Boulevard, Unit F. And I'm...
Oops. Could you say that again, please? We missed you there for a minute.
Okay, I am here to change the name of the business.
Is that all?
Uh, yes, because everything else is intact. Uh, we, uh, have a unit there now. And we took on another unit and we're just changing the name. There, nothing is going to change inside. Um, everything stays the same.
Kathy, do you have anything?
Uh, just for clarification for those listening, this is the, um, the former Trinity Fitness Facility at, uh, in Unit F and the, uh, box hit which is already in this particular building, um, is going to take over for Trinity Fitness.
Yes, that's correct.
Missioners have anything? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Well, they are conditioned.
Three conditions.
Three conditions.
I'll second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Teedman.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Berkovich.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
All right, we have one public hearing tonight and we will follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain their proposal. Then those looking to speak in favor are giving an opportunity to voice their opinion. Finally, if you would like to speak in opposition, you will be given an opportunity to voice your opinion. Or some people may just have questions and we will try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow modifications to the required buffer adjacent to the R2 and R4 single-family residential districts at 7272 Atkins Road. Is that applicant here?
Yes, he is. I would unmute Jack Berry.
Okay, I am, uh, my name is Jack Berry from, uh, 2901 Pebble Beach Court, Findlay, Ohio. I'm the architect for the, uh, for the church. Uh, is anybody else from the church here?
Yes, they are. Pastor Steve is here and so is the landscape architect and the civil engineer.
Okay.
But I was gonna unmute you all instead of unmuting all at one time. I was gonna do it individually if possible.
Can we get each of those people's names for the record, please?
Can we get your names for the record, please?
My name is Jack Berry, B-E-R-R-Y.
Hi, I'm Pastor Steve Sindelar. And, um, I just wanted to thank you all very quickly. I'll let you guys know that we're praying for you. And, uh, wanted to thank the staff as well. I know we've been going back and forth and they've been incredibly accessible, especially during this time. And we couldn't be more proud of our city. We've been in our city here right on 306 for al- almost 75 years. And we couldn't be more proud of how you all have continued to develop our city, uh, with a forward mindset. And so we just wanted to thank you and let you guys know that we are proud to be in, in Mentor. And, uh, Jamie, I think, are you on? I think they've unmuted us. I'll let, uh...
Uh, yes, good evening. My name is Jamie Schwartzberg. I'm with DeRue Landscape Architecture. I'm the landscape architect for the project.
Well, if Rich is on the call tonight or not.
Yes, I am here. Rich Cantanzaridi, land design consultant for the civil engineer and civil area for the project.
What's that gentleman's last name?
Cantanzaridi. I'll get it.
Anyway, so I, I'll let, uh, Jack maybe give some more details, but the request to modify the buffer simply, uh, is due to maybe three, three things in my mind. Um, I understand that we're a church, not a residence, but, uh, we do exist, you know, in residential districts and, uh, so, uh, the buffer requirements, I think we're trying to meet the spirit of the law, but it, it does seem, uh, to be, um, a little difficult from a, from a church perspective. You know, we're not a Walmart, um, and, and it seems like that, that tends to be kind of the, the buffer requirements. Uh, but I can certainly appreciate the, the residential concerns and so we're trying to meet those as best we can. Uh, maybe more primarily, especially to the, uh, west of our property line. Uh, there is an already existing, uh, rather mature woodset. And, uh, I know John McFarland from the city has walked out with Jamie. Uh, we've actually identified, um, more than 100 feet. I think it's almost triple that, 300 or so feet, um, of that, of that, maybe 200 feet of that area, just to give a sample of all the, the existing size and maturity of that. And then i- in addition to the concerns of the buffer, we've added evergreens, uh, just to try to make sure it doesn't look like this one giant wall of fence. And that seems to be agreeable with all the neighbors that I've chatted with over the last two years. Um, as well as adding fence where fence, uh, is most appropriate to mitigate, you know, in the wintertime. We understand, uh, uh, the, the wooded area isn't as full in the, in the winter. Uh, and then a- across the way on the east side of our property line. That's, that's not me, sorry. Uh, across the east side of our property line, um, you know, it's mostly just a field right now. Um, and, uh, with, with tall grass year round. Uh, and so last time you, you all asked us to continue trees down, uh, the south of, of the property. So we did that in, in this, uh, buffer. So that's kind of the spirit behind it anyway, and hopefully we can, hopefully we can move forward with your permission.
Okay. Uh, before we get started from here and from the public, I'd like to state that we are in all receipt of correspondence. It has been brought to our attention that some residents oppose the church location. This location was approved by the planning commission at the August 20th, 2020 public hearing. Tonight, we are addressing a conditional use permit for modifications to require buffer adjacent to the east and west property lines. So with that, is there anybody here willing to speak in favor of this conditional use permit?
Mr. Chairman, I do know there are a couple of residents that had some concerns in the Q and A. I'm not sure if you can see that Q and A. And there are a couple of others out there. I don't know if they are in favor or against it. We can unmute one at a time if you'd like.
Okay.
If I, if I might, just real quickly, um, just to give you the, the demographic, we have almost 1,000 individuals that call Grace Church home. Now of those 1,000, 700 are adults. Um, and so I can, I can speak for those 700 that they're, they're in favor of it, so, uh, just, just a point there.
Okay, let's let the, uh, public hear. Yes, sir.
I'm gonna unmute Bill Hill right now.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Commission. Uh, it's good being with you. I'm glad I was able to, to get on. I'm Bill Hill, uh, member of Painesville Baptist Church, owner of the property to the east of Grace property.
Bill, are you speaking in favor?
No, sir.
No, okay.
I'm speaking in opposition to the...
So right now, we just want, we're ju- we're trying to unmute everybody to see who is in favor, so... Okay. Just hold on a second. Anybody speaking in favor?
Let's see, I'll... Brittany is speaking against it based off of her comments. So is Mr. Rogers. Christine, I'm gonna unmute her now. I'm not sure what position she has.
Okay, yes. I, yes, I'm against it.
Okay, so just hold on then. What's her name? Christine, thank you. Her last name.
Well, we'll get it.
Okay, we'll do Carlos next.
Against, sir.
You're against it?
Yes.
Okay.
And the last one I see here right now is a Daniel Kalial.
Yes, I'm in, uh, very much favor of spreading the word of God. Um, I'm not even sure if Grace knows of me, but I've been following him up for many years, been here 55 years here in Mentor. Um, I did own some businesses here in Mentor and I know that it's just a positive, if you want to call it force from the city, but something positive that's coming forward in the city of Mentor, Ohio.
Can I get your name again?
Sure, my name's Daniel Kalial.
Could you spell that last name?
I sure can. It's K-A-L-E-A-L.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is that all you have?
That was the last person, like, what? We have, I guess, we have Barbara Green. Barbara, are you speaking in favor of this request?
Yes.
Could you state your name?
Uh, my name is Barbara Green and I've been a member of Grace for close to 20 years. And I've seen the positive impact on that church, uh, with the teenagers and the young, uh, children. They're so polite and caring. They open doors for me and are just so sweet. Um, and I think the parents are being trained correctly to raise children with respect. And I just really appreciate the ministry there very, very much.
Thank you. Any more in favor?
I don't see anyone else that we haven't talked, touched upon already.
Okay, before we get with the opposition, again, this is just a conditional use permit to change the buffering on the east and west property line. It's not a, it's not a public hearing to oppose the church going there. So i- I, I think we need to keep our comments directed towards your buffering, whether you like or dislike the buffering on the east and west property lines. So with that, I think we had Bill Hill in the queue. He was first up and, uh, Bill, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Uh, thank you again. Appreciate being here, Mr. Chairman, and being able to speak before this board. Uh, as I say, I'm representing the Pa- uh, Painesville Baptist Church. My pastor, uh, Green is with me also. And he may have a comment if he could, uh, as we continue. Uh, my first comment is that, uh, the drawings that were submitted that I've been able to review, uh, state in a couple of things that, uh, Grace Churches would like to use the land between our two properties for recreational purposes. Uh, and, uh, and they also, they, they state on the drawings that they would, they have been atten- about, uh, asked, been asked about selling the property to them also. Uh, we have told them previously, no, we do not want to do that in both cases. And I think I would, I would ask that these be removed from the drawings. Uh, the second thing is, uh, looking at the proposed, uh, uh, plantings. Uh, we, we feel that, that we would rather see the full 100% of the required screening go in that the commission, the city would, has on their books. Uh, again, that's, that's our opinion and we would like to see that occur. Uh, those are my comments. Pastor, good? Is it, is it all right if Pastor speaks?
Yes, just please state your name.
Hi, my name is, uh, Pastor Stony Drain. Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate the opportunity. I first want to just mention that, first of all, um, when they first bought the land, I sent, I just want to mention this, that we sent, uh, I basically sent a text over them, um, congratulating them. I'm glad that, uh, they're coming. And also when the first meeting came to pass about them being, uh, getting rezoned, I also sent a letter to you folks saying we're glad and welcome them in the community and glad that they're a neighbor. I welcome any churches that, uh, is coming into Mentor, so I'm very thankful for that. Um, the difference of opinion I have is I can't seem to communicate that this, that this property that we have is really owned by more than just Painesville Baptist Church, but really there's 60 churches that are involved in our association. Our goal is right now that church, uh, currently is being occupied by another church that is, uh, just doing well with their ministry. But our church has plans down the road. Um, I'm involved in Mentor too. I'm a chaplain with Painesville City Police Department. I'm the one that set it up back in 2008 and I work with Father Tim and, you know, our goal is, is that we would like to create a facility there in the future with basically a, not only that it's gonna be a church, but basically it's going to be a free clinic. And we actually have drawings and I know you probably can't see these, but we have drawings ourselves. And the whole reason that I want to mention this is that we really want to have some kind of boundary, um, between us because I don't, as much as I communicated this to Grace, they keep getting the idea that they can hold or they can, they're gonna do this. And like I said, it's really not an option for, um, our facility and our churches. So, um, once again, I welcome them to them, to the community, um, support what they're doing. But I do think that we would like 100% uh, basically, uh, land, uh, landscape, uh, between us. And I appreciate you letting me to speak and thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition?
I will unmute Brittany now if she wants to speak concerning the buffer. Brittany? Brittany, are you there? Okay, we will try Carlos. Carlos?
Yes.
Carlos? Could you state your name, first and last name and address?
Carlos, got it. 7471 Kittery Lane.
Carlos, could you turn off your, or could you turn off your TV behind you or mute it? Because I, we're getting some interference.
Um, it might, it might be just loud speaker. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, a little.
Name?
Could you spell your last name? Thank you. You have the floor.
Um, I'm, I'm just more concerned about the woodland behind my property. Like, I, I know that the church is gonna be more up front, but I just wanna make sure, like, I, I'm looking through the drawings. I'm just trying to figure out, like, the easement of the property, like, how, are they gonna keep the tree line up? Or is that, like, how much interference they're gonna come into the tree line that's where you scan, uh, establish?
Okay, we'll try to get you those answers. Is that all you have?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next person speaking in opposition?
Okay, we have Brittany now.
Brittany, please spell your, or say your first and last name for the record.
Brittany, can you hear us?
Okay, let's move on to, uh, another one.
Okay, we will go to Christina. Christina, you're...
Please, uh, state your first and last name for the record.
My name is Christine Boyk, B-E-U-C-K. I have nothing to say about the buffering. I had other concerns about the traffic on the Atkins.
Okay, the next person we will go to would be Curtis Rogers.
Hello, can you hear me?
Curtis?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, could you, uh?
Yeah, so, uh, Curtis Rogers.
For the record, please?
R-O-G-E-R-S. Um, Curtis Rogers. More general questions, but I guess to go to the buffering side of things. Um, I would like to see that the wood line is maintained and not torn down. Um...
Are you talking on the east or west line? The, the west side?
Uh, am I facing north or south?
Are you on Kittery, and you are, are you in Kittery Cove?
Am I what?
Are you in, located in Kittery Cove?
No, we are on the corner of Atkins and 306, across from the existing church.
Okay.
Um, so from our house, it would be on the right side, so I guess that would be the east.
Your east.
West, yeah.
Your left, I'm sorry. He's, I think, he's concerned about the east property line.
Yeah, um, so kind of, uh, second what Carlos's, um, concerns were, I would like to see that maintain. Um, and to bounce off of Christine's, I have a lot of other general questions. And I would like it if there's gonna be a meeting about general queries. Is that gonna be possible?
Well, we had a public hearing already.
So you can't have two?
Well, we had a public hearing on the, on the 20th and regarding all of these issues. Uh, I, I hate to, to revisit that again when, when this one is really just for the buffering.
Correct, but so my, um, concern is we weren't, we didn't get a letter about that meeting that you had on the 20th. So I feel like as residents of Mentor, our voices aren't being heard because you've already done that. Why can't you maybe?
Since you weren't adjacent and didn't get a letter, uh, go ahead.
Okay, so the biggest concern is the traffic on 306 and Atkins is, as it is today, horrendous. Um, it's impossible to get out of our driveway. It's impossible to do anything. So is there any plan on having maybe police officers direct traffic? Um, and then my second question is, given the size of the land and the tax revenue that can be generated, why, what are the city's plans for making up what they could have got? Because it's church, let's check, they don't get taxed for anything. Um, just, I want to see my city get better. He's a business guy, I like. Yeah, I like it, me too. Thanks, man.
Okay, we'll try to get you those answers.
Well, how are you gonna give me those answers?
Kathy?
Sir, we're still in the public hearing portion and the procedures for the public hearing portion is to hear the questions and then we will, at, after all of the questions are, or comments are made, then the board can make comments on those and if they desire them, also the applicant can make comments. So we take the questions and then we move on.
So is no guarantee that the, my questions are gonna be answered then?
That's not what I said. I said we take the questions and then from that point, we, uh, will, uh, respond to those at the time after the, all of the comments and questions are heard.
And where will those be posted at or where can I find those answers?
Tonight, we're gonna close, close the public hearing and have an open discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Larry, anybody else?
Yes, we have Joe. I'm gonna unmute Joe now.
Hi, it's Joe Cameriere. I live on Atkins. I was just curious on if they could...
Hold on, Joe, real quick. Could you spell your last name?
Sure.
You guys?
I was just curious if there could be some type of, uh, reservoir, and I'm sorry, I, maybe, and I, if there is something already, forgive me, I'm not, not aware of it. Something that could catch the water overflow incorporated in the buffer, um, to catch the overflow of the water coming off all the parking lot? So the existing sewers could handle them?
Yeah, but they don't see, they don't have anything to do with it.
Is that all?
Yep, that's it. I was just curious.
Okay, thank you. Larry, anybody else?
Okay, we're gonna try Brittany one more time.
All right, Brittany?
Brittany, are you there? Brittany? Okay, I guess she's not there. She was having mic issues earlier.
Is that all, Larry?
That's all.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Can we get the applicant back?
I am back.
All right, any questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
Uh, based on the comments, uh, made by the, um, the other church, the adjacent church property, uh, it sounds like that's part of the justification for maintaining the, the required buffer between your property and their property. Would you, uh, would you accept that?
Um, first of all, I'd just like to, if they're still listening, publicly apologize. Certainly, um, it was not my intent, our intent, to have them publicly, um, have to make any of those comments. So whatever the communication issues happened there, I, I certainly do want to apologize publicly. And it was also, I did not realize that anything was actually officially on the drawings either. And, uh, so I'm gonna have obviously those comments removed, uh, from the landscape drawing. So I do apologize about that as well. Yeah, I, I, that's, it's cert- the, the full, the full buffer, uh, request is certainly news to me. But, but to be fair to them, uh, we have not had recent communication. Uh, I did try calling, um, but, uh, but that's besides the point. Um, I would, I would like to see if, if we, we could work out something with them to, to reduce. I don't know if they're aware of Mentor's full buffering requirements, um, which, you know, uh, is a lot more hard, is a lot harder to maintain than what we currently have. Um, you know, as far as plantings, et cetera, especially with, with that being a field. I, 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 you know, I, I think the condition, uh, listed two additional plantings of ornamental evergreen shrubs. evergreen shrubs, um, you know, is there, is there room in there, I guess, from, from the city, from the staff, and from you all to maybe not do the full in force, but, but, uh, but to add additional, you know, we've, we've certainly tried to work here, uh, to keep the landscaping, uh, maintainable over time, to make it look good. Um, and that's our intent. I just ask that request, if, if, you know, we could certainly keep the buffer, uh, I don't know if, if it had, you know, does it have to be, do they want more evergreens? I, I don't, you know, I mean, and maybe that's something we could do offline, I suppose, is probably most appropriate with, with Painsville Baptist, if I could have a conversation with them, in the city, obviously.
I mean, my observation is that your communication should be with the city. I, I don't know that, I don't know that the, the Painsville Church could alter the city's view of what the buffering should be. So, I, I mean, the, the requirements are from the city of Mentor, um, I would, I mean, we have, we have a, uh, proposed condition in front of us, and we have a number of conditions. Are you familiar with those conditions?
Yes, sir, yeah.
And so, I mean, that's what's in front of us, the commission, tonight, so I guess...
Yes, sir, I understand that, I guess, I guess number two is additional plantings is, um, is there any more direction on that condition, I guess, is, is my question? Is that just, is that just then to be approved administratively with, with the staff?
Well, based on the table, the, let's just talk about, uh, right now, let's just focus on the east property line. Let's do these property lines, one and the other. If you look at your, there's a, give or take 637 linear feet of that property line, and if you do the math, which is required from the city, you're at 644 plantings. So I, I think there should be a, a look at this with the landscape architect and the city, and maybe get Painsville Baptist Church involved in this. If there can be some mounding created near the retention basin that's going in, detention base, I'm sorry, with some additional landscaping, because right now, you just have, like, I mean, uh, maybe 55 or 60, and the code being just shy of 650, you know, I, I, I think that's a bit aggressive, but it is the code, but I think there needs to be some further communication between you, Painsville Baptist, and the administration to come up with another plan that, that everybody's happy with. And, I mean, that's just how I feel, I don't, I don't know how the rest of the commission members feel, but...
Well, if we, if we put this off, we would, uh, want to table this, then.
Right, that's...
At least the, the buffering part.
Any, any thoughts on that, Kathy?
Also, uh, in the, in the number two condition, we do make mention of the types of plantings that we suggest, and this is coming from the landscape architect of the, of the city in the planning department, and specifically, um, additional plantings of ornamental and evergreen shrubs, along with tall grasses, um, should be added, mounding shall be also installed. Um, we recognize, obviously, the, uh, the detention basin is there, and, um, but there still can be plantings around the detention basin, and the mounding can be provided, um, uh, south of, of the detention basin, certainly, to create more of an appropriate buffer. Um, there is no fencing proposed on that side, we're not saying it has to be, but, I mean, there could be a combination, a little bit more of like what you've done on the west side, um, uh, with some intermittent fencing and, and, and then the plantings also, but, um, for as open as that east side is, and, and how much it is viewable from Reynolds Road, uh, I think we were certainly also hoping to see more, not necessarily, obviously, the purpose of, of the buffer request tonight is to reduce or relax that to some degree, and that's fine, but to the chairman, the, the vice chairman's point tonight, there's a big disparity between those numbers, and we need to come a little closer to that, to that difference.
And could, could that be done between the lands, between, this, could it be done administratively? Does that, does that have to come back to us if, if all the parties are in agreement?
It's up to you, I mean, what we've often done in the past with, with projects that have come before you, is, is we, you make your recommendations with your conditions, and then we continue to review it through the building permit process, um, and, uh, we could even strengthen that language a little bit more, uh, that a building permit won't be issued until, you know, until we're satisfied with, you know, that proposal, um, but if you prefer to see it, you can certainly, you know, request to have it back, whatever you prefer.
Anything else? What's the pleasure of a, uh?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't catch who it was.
Just relating to this, um, east side buffer, I think that, um, as we've done in the past, where we suggest, um, based on administrative comments, that we want to see a little bit more plantings, but I think that administratively, um, them working back and forth, because, for example, a lot of the requirements are for a number of plants that are low growth or perennials, and so those might not effectively screen, so maybe their game plan that they could work out with the administration would be, hey, we're going to use tall grasses and so forth, less number of plantings, but it actually does a better service, so I, I, I feel that that could be worked out with the administration, so as long as that's in our condition, which it is in number two. Thank you.
Okay, now, does anybody have any more on the east property line? All right, now we're going to address the west side, so any, uh, any concerns from the commissioners on the west side?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I think it's, from the comments we got from the public hearing portion, it sounds like the buffer area will remain, the tree line is going to remain, is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir, yeah, that, that's really our intent and, and our, our desire, as we've communicated over with the city, um, you know, we, we, we don't want to go in there and chop down existing mature tree. Um, I mean, there's, there's quite a few there, and our landscape architect's on, uh, she can make some comments, but essentially what she has surveyed out, you know, in terms of the, the caliber of tree and the type of tree, um, to her testimony, you know, that, that tree line goes the entire length of our property line, and, uh, it, it would be counterproductive, quite frankly, to have to do anything other than leave that in the 50-foot buffer, and so that's our desire now, where she has identified a few weak spots with the winter months, um, we've either put some partial fence or evergreens, so we've tried to go, uh, the ex, not the extra mile, but tried to cover that side for our residents, for our, for our neighbors, and, um, with, with trying to keep the caliber of tree, the maturity of tree that's there, that's our, that's completely our intent.
Yeah, I agree, I just want to make sure, uh, Carlos, uh, heard that, that the tree line was going to be preserved there for him. Uh, I'm, I'm assuming you're okay with stipulation number three there, the conditional, condition number three?
Yeah, my only, I, I guess a point of clarity, um, it says the, the remaining 330 feet of buffer area to the end of phase one line shall be identified and submitted for review. Um, I, I would ask respectfully, um, that, you know, the, the, we've already identified first over many hundred feet, um, it's essentially the same homogeneous moving that way, um, it, it seems kind of, oh, and I, it's just a matter of money, it just seems kind of a waste of, of money and resources that, to continue to identify the, the mature trees that are already there, I don't think it's going to magically change, um, and, and we're certainly, you know, I think you can see our, our faith effort to fill in, you know, any voids with evergreens and, and fence along the way, so I'd respectfully ask for that to be reconsidered unless I'm misunderstanding number three.
Well, again, not to get into the weeds on the numbers, the property line length is 749 linear feet, and if you do the math for the code, you're at, in the neighborhood of 780 plantings, so although you do have a lot of existing there, you know, some are ash trees and maples and, and trees that are going to drop their leaves, so, you know, there'll be times during the year where, you know, what, your new screenings and the existing trees are fine, but there's going to be times during the year, like we all know, within a couple weeks, that all the leaves are going to fall, so I'm not saying you need, at least for me, 784 plantings, but I think there needs to be, uh, a little bit more, and I, I do appreciate this sporadic fencing, but...
We are providing continuous coverage with either fence or evergreen trees along the entire length of the property, uh, can you clarify what you imagine as a little bit more?
Well, I may also add respectfully, um, to add anymore would, would really require us essentially to cut down existing trees that are there, because we're, as you can tell in the plan, we're, as Jamie just pointed out, we're adding either fence or evergreen, essentially in that, that, that field area, right between the, the tree line and, and in the field.
Kathy?
I, I guess, I, I'd just like to, to go back to Pastor Sinclair's comments about, um, uh, item number three, and the purpose of item number three was, as part of the preliminary plan approval, uh, we indicated that we needed, um, an inventory of what, what existed, and you've done a, an excellent job of showing that for the first 300 feet, but then it stopped, and...
You were asked to inventory of 100 feet, and we provided almost 500. We've asked to inventory the entire property line.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, is when, when somebody looks at this plan, it, it's not showing, I understand that there's existing trees there, and, and you're asking us to, to go on that, on that indication that we know what's out there, it, it still needs to be shown on the plan, so we're just asking that what is out there just be indicated on the plan, so it, it indicates to us the true buffer that's, that will exist, that's all we're asking for.
Kathy, would it be permissible, or Mrs. Miller, excuse me, would it be permissible to, uh, just essentially indicate on the plan that the, um, that, you know, the 500 feet or so surveyed is, is essentially a homogeneous representation of the next 300 so feet? Would that be permissible with the city and the planning commission?
Because I think that's the direction we were initially given as well, that we could do that.
What, could I have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Varga.
Um, I noticed, and, and I, that was a question, now I understand why there are no more trees shown on the plan beyond the point where it approaches the front, the face of the building, then it were, no, about halfway through the building, uh, but you have located some new plantings, is, are they in response to existing trees? Or is this, or is this just a rhythmic placement of trees, uh, without really knowing what's there?
You can see where the existing trees land and, and then places where those trees pull back, or it's, it's smaller shrubs, or in one pla, in one indicate, in, um, instance, it's, um, invasive grasses, and, and those are the places where we're proposing the new evergreen planting, we made, um, assumptions about the rest of the buffer, that it would be a similar disposition of trees to fence.
But is that based on existing trees? Is that based on existing tree locations?
Yes.
So it's ma, it's based on your observations in the field?
Correct.
To what, where these new plantings should go, and where the fence should go relative to existing trees?
Correct, so that we can damage the existing trees as little as possible.
Which is a good thing.
Thank you. Anything else? Kathy?
I do have the, uh, staff report from the August 20th meeting, which carried through in the conditions, uh, for that approval, and it basically indicates, um, that a study or plan shall be prepared, which identifies the existing trees within the western buffer to be preserved. Uh, there wasn't a set distance, I guess, as was...
That was a condition to the original approval.
It was a condition of the original approval, so I, and I don't, and, 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 and maybe the landscape architect can speak to the difficulty in identifying what those existing trees are, um, uh, rather than to say, uh, this is a repeat of what you see in the first 300 feet, is there a challenge to providing what those existing, and, and, and we're talking, you know, it, it looks like you've done a good job with the, with the, uh, existing tree inventory here, if it's, if it's, you know, pretty close to being, uh, duplicated, I guess I'm just trying to understand what is the challenge in indicating that on the plan?
I, I, I think in terms of, I mean, we can absolutely go back out and, and do that, it's the, the actual functionality of it isn't, um, difficult, I think the difficulty is in that we are getting communication from city officials indicating one thing, and we're getting responses that are asking for something different, so we believe that we more than generously complied to the initial ask, and I think Jack was the one who had the conversation with the city's landscape architect.
Correct.
I think...
I'm sorry?
Yes, yeah, Jack, we can hear you.
Okay.
I think we, you know, we need, we need, we received what we felt was clear direction, and now the city keeps moving the goalposts, and that does not feel quite how the process should proceed.
Mr. Varga?
Yes, uh, the, the survey, tree survey was part of the original approval by the planning commission, regardless of what, who else you talked about, so that's, or the original development, the preliminary plan, so that was a condition of the original approval by the planning commission, regardless of whoever else said anything to you.
Understood, and I'm, I guess I'm, I'm respectfully asking that, in, in order to, to preserve resources, um, that, that you, that you consider just striking down that condition, uh, for, for the, for the request of modification, um, just due to the, we can put it certainly on the, on the plan that, that it represents the, uh, you know, what you see is represented essentially in the rest of the, the plant, uh, the rest of the, the length, but that's, that's my request anyway, from a, from a resource standpoint, point from a, from a church.
I, I, I think we have a lot more questions than we have answers here, so...
Well, I, I propose that we table this until we can resolve some of these issues about the previous approval, about those conditions, about what we're discussing tonight for the, and this is for the conditional use permit about the buffer, issues that we table that until these issues are resolved.
And a little more work can go into and work with administration and take another run at it.
Consensus from the commission?
Mr. Chairman? I'll just add, add to that, that, uh, I think maybe in this number three condition, um, maybe it would just need to be spelled out with the administration, that, uh, maybe they're misinterpreting what we're asking, I don't think that we're actually asking for them to go and identify each one and tell us what tree it is, um, as long as it's shown on here, it represents actual conditions, and then they're telling us that if it steps in here and there, we're going to add these trees, I think that goes a long way to us seeing that on our plan and knowing that that's the condition out in, in the real world, so... seeing that on our plan and knowing that that's the condition out in the, in the real world. So I think maybe it's just they get to the bottom of this definition that's there and that we're all on the same page.
Or a typical section.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
And please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Sisro?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
This has been tabled. Okay, we'll move on to number three on our agenda tonight, which is the final site plan of the church at 7272 Atkins Road. The applicant is here. Could you tell us a little bit about what your plans are?
Site plan to the buffer that we just talked about. So I do appreciate your patience.
If I could ask the, the board as well as the applicant to address some of the items that were talked about in the public hearing that do relate to the site plan. I know one of the items was specific to how the, I think the detention is gonna work on the site in relation to water flow off the site. And then if they could just briefly touch on how they anticipate traffic, since I know that was brought up, we don't have to spend a lot of time, but because we indicated we would, we would respond to that. If they could, that would be great. Just their general traffic that they anticipate on, on their, on their highest days, et cetera. And do they have assistance when they have, I believe they use men or police to assist with traffic? Will that continue?
Kathy, I will let Rich, if he's still on, address the more technical aspects of those two questions. As far as the traffic, he can give the, the specific numbers generated, but we essentially have one main service on Sunday that would potentially impact traffic for about maybe 30 minutes. And we, we do use an off-duty men or police officer to facilitate a faster, you know, to alleviate the traffic as much as possible. And we would continue, our plan would be to continue to use that as long as it's permissible with the city and our, our good folks at the men or police department. Rich, are you on to
I am here.
Address the others?
Yes, I am here. Regarding the detention basin and the site itself, the site drainage, the, the detention basins are designed to protect the entire property. The stormwater, the entire property. And that's, and, you know, the basins are also sized for phases one and two. There is a existing small acreage of land within phase two, south of, of, why, I guess I should say, there's a, at some point, the mound, the mound, the existing 50-foot-wide mound doesn't exist. At that point, there's, there is some drainage that is allowed to travel into that existing ditch behind Kedry Cove. But aside from that small acreage, I think it's an acre and a half or so, the entire property flows north to Atkins Road. And again, the entire property is, is designed to, you know, designed to go to the the post-stormwater detention basins on both sides of the, of the Atkins. So there's no water that's traveling off of our property to the north or the east without being detained or captured. And regarding the traffic, yeah, I think Pastor Steve explained the, you know, how that's gonna be maintained during service hours. We provided the trip generation analysis, I think, I don't have my notes in front of me, but I think you know, it didn't warrant a traffic light, and like Pastor Steve said, we, we're the men or policeman on, on, on site when that's
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Rich, since you're still on the line, I noticed in the trip generation report, you used the wrong number of seats in there. I know it's only off by four, but can you submit a, a new trip generation to support the, the correct numbers?
I sure will.
And also to the point of the police officer, is that gonna be at Atkins and your entrance, or at Atkins and 306, or both?
That was asked last time. I, as far as I understand it, so I, I think that we would leave that up to whatever is best for the city. As far as I understand it, changing, temporarily changing lights on 306 could cause issue all along the way is what was mentioned last time, but we would be, we want to be a team player, so however we can help the city best in that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hadden. Kathy, there was a question on the loss of revenue because the church owns the property. Could you speak a little bit on private property rights and and I know there was a gentleman that had that question regarding loss of city revenue because it's a church? So on and so forth.
Well, this, this property, as it, as it is owned, is R4, single-family residential, and there are, per the Planning and Zoning Code, there are a, a list of permitted and conditionally permitted uses. So if it's not going to be designed for single-family homes, the other options do include, in this instance, a church, some other public uses, schools, et cetera, are considered permitted uses. This piece of property is privately owned, and therefore the, the property owner has the right to submit a request for review by the city that is in compliance with the district regulations. So the fact that a church was proposed here, and, and the fact that a church was proposed here does comply with the allowable list of uses as, as long as the city feels that the impacts are accounted for and addressed in, in the design of the site. So, you know, we, and we did receive some other correspondence that came in by email that did indicate those similar concerns and also to the effect of, you know, why would we as a city be okay with the church leaving their old site to go to this site? And now we have a vacant building on the old site. We as a city don't have that right to tell them that they can't sell their property and move to a new location, just similar to somebody having the right as a, as a, as a house, as a homeowner to, to sell their property and move to another location. So these are about allowing and respecting the fact that we do have a, a process that has to be followed, and the church is within, within their rights to, to make the request.
Thank you. Mr. Varga?
This is, we have a number of things, items that are conditions of the city. Six of them. One of them is about making some alterations to the architectural appearance of the building. And they're making suggestions. I'm going to suggest that that condition be tabled or removed from tonight's consideration in that a, a architectural presentation is made for architectural review separate from the final site plan approval.
If it, I don't know if it's okay for me to speak or not.
Sure, sure.
Okay, sorry. If it matters to the gentleman, I, we, we actually, I actually agree, and that, that really is our intent is to have a, either a material or color change. So it's not solid, especially on, again, the, the main wall and question for us is a, is a temporary wall, and I understand that it is a very public wall, and I understand that we don't know what temporary means, right? So I can appreciate all those things. We do care. Hopefully you understand, we do, we're trying to care about aesthetics. I hope that that is represented in what we presented you in landscaping and lighting choices, et cetera, et cetera. So just, if it matters, we, I, I agree actually with that condition, and, and I think we can, we can do that easily with, with a, with a color variance that would be, you know, in character with the rest of the building, if that matters.
Right. I'm only suggesting that you, you bring that to us at a later date so that we can approve it.
Okay.
So, and I have another comment, just, I, I looked at the fire department comments, and I didn't see this. And I just want to suggest that especially when you consider the future building addition, I know we're only looking at the site plan as it exists for the first phase, but you can see where the future building addition. Usually the fire department wants a fire lane around the building. And I don't see it on the plan. And I don't see it in their comments, though they may only be reviewing the first phase and not the second phase. So what I'm gonna suggest as a condition
I think we have that.
A fire lane?
Yeah, a, a fire lane or fire line?
Fire lane.
Oh.
It'll teach you to drive a vehicle around the building.
I don't know if it matters, and, and this, you know, this may not be good enough, but we did have a meeting with the chief, and, and Rich and Jack were there, and we had that discussion, and they were comfortable with access, eventually with access. They could turn around in the, in the back parking lot, and they were comfortable with access to three of the sides.
All right, is that? Am I getting
They did, they did have
Having a confirmation from the city. So then I will withdraw that. I usually like to bring it up, though, in case no one has brought it up. So then that's not an issue. So then, so then what I would suggest
Do we have anything from other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hadden?
What is the, I understand you're, you're putting an additional what, AD7 parking spaces in, because that's gonna be for the future building expansion, is that correct?
Technically, no. Yeah, are you talking about the existing proposed or the potential future parking?
I, I believe you're proposing 392 parking spots, and the maximum required is 305, so you're, you're way over that number.
Yes, sir. Yeah, currently, that gets asked a lot. I wish we could get everybody in our building with, with that number of parking spaces. It would, it would be great. Currently, we have about 300, we have about 275 painted spots on our current property, and about another 30 or so that we use for overflow. And on our, on our, you know, peak service time, we essentially have almost 100% utilization. So essentially, meeting code, maximum code i- in this building would put us at a, at a disadvantage, essentially. We have attendance documentation, we, we, the city has, the, the city has done their due diligence and asked us the same question. It's been my response every time.
You have been asking. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The the issues of the, the number five condition, the architectural review, there was also one other issue other than look, seeing, finding out what these large walls will eventually look like so that we can approve them. There was an issue with the brick returns on the portion of the building that that extends forward into the north. There's a side return on both the west and east side. I think it was suggested that that would be, it had brick on it before, the brick was removed, I think. We're looking to have that brick replaced. So I'm mentioning this in terms of a, at the next meeting, we will review this architecturally, but that was one of the comments and one of the observations that I made.
Yes, sir, and we actually discussed that offline, and 100% agree with that comment. So that's already been, that's already been changed.
That's right. So I'm gonna propose that we you know, the comment, that we accept it with five conditions, removing the number five condition.
May I, may I ask if it's possible to get some clarity on a few of the conditions? And and maybe Jamie can speak to number two with the five additional canopy trees?
Jamie?
If she doesn't start talking.
No, sorry. Um, we, I think we just need some clarification from the city. Our reading of the statute was that the landscape buffer was all of the area between the parking lot and the sidewalk. And it appears that the city, when they reviewed the plans, only counted the trees right against the sidewalk, and we just need clarification on whether that is how we should be counting as we go forward, or whether all the trees between the parking lot and the sidewalk count as towards that landscape buffer requirement.
Kathy?
So we counted, we counted the seven trees that are shown on the plan between between the parking and the sidewalk. So we, yeah, we're somewhat, you know, liberal in that, but we wanted to make sure that
Well, I think you counted the trees between the, the detention basin and the sidewalk, not between the parking lot and the sidewalk.
There's trees on the other side of the detention basin, but still between the parking lot and the sidewalk.
So I'm looking sorry.
Kathy?
Again, I, I think what we're looking at is that, and, and we can clarify this when we, when we discuss the landscape plan again, but the canopy trees that we counted, we counted seven, and that in the, in the requirement, it would have been 12 that were needed.
Okay, yeah, if we can talk about it when we talk about the other items.
Is there 12 canopy trees there? Are we not seeing it right?
The requirement just says trees, so we did a mix of canopy trees, evergreen trees, and ornamental trees. If the city prefers to just have canopy trees, we can make that adjustment.
So you're, you're okay with the second condition, then?
Yeah, no, we're okay with it. We just need some clarification on what you'd like to see there.
Okay.
So, well, I guess additional, I, I guess I would just like to say, instead of additional, replacing existing proposed trees. In other words, we don't need more trees there necessarily. We just, if it's canopy trees specifically that is, is required or requested maybe would be a best, best use in this case. Is that, is that accurate? In other words, we can change out a, a few of the trees, a few of the evergreens or, or something? Is that, is that what the city essentially is asking us to do?
And again, I don't have the benefit of having the landscape architect here, but I think the, the idea was that the, the canopy trees were suggested to be added. We're not asking to change out what you have, but just add some additional trees.
Yeah, I guess this is my point of clarity, is it says that we're not in compliance currently. And I guess our reading of, of the code seems to indicate that it's not necessarily canopy trees that are required. So it, it, it does seem, and I could become, I'm just asking, I should ask, are, are we in compliance with the, with the number of trees that are between the sidewalk and the parking lot, as it stands?
Why don't we do this? We could modify the condition to indicate that the appropriate number of trees shall be provided between the sidewalk and the proposed, and in the front buffer in compliance with 6207B2. So that it indicates, we're just, we're asking for that, make sure that that is in compliance, so we don't split hairs over these numbers right now.
Right. That's, that's reasonable.
That's fair. Agree with that?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. You have any other issues with the conditions?
I guess the proposed landscape materials on Atkins Road, that's essentially just, we have that indicated there, where, where the neighbor would request. Is that more in your mind, Kathy and the commission, just working with the neighbor to try to find what they prefer there?
It's just head, headlight mitigation. It's just headlight mitigation landscape?
Yeah, certainly, they, you've obviously earmarked a place for it, but we just don't have any indication of what you're putting there. So it probably would be helpful to get some input, you know, from them, just because it is directly affecting them. And again, I just mean input, I, you know, so we can, we can also, we can also discuss that. But if you had something in mind, and you want to present that as a proposal, you can do it that way as well. But we just don't have anything showing to indicate what that landscaping will be.
So as a condition, it's fine. He will at some point identify that.
Kathy, are those trees in the right of way, or on the person's property?
It appears to be on the property.
Which they would need an easement to install those, correct?
That would be correct.
Our hope was that we could work with that homeowner and identify with them what they would like in their front yard. And then that would just, our landscaper, when they do the install, would install that for them. And it would then belong to that homeowner that we wouldn't. But that's partly why we didn't specify it, is we really feel like we should work with the homeowner and let them choose what they would like.
Paul, do you think there should be more of an easement there, or something written up that?
It needs to be in writing, because we've always had this problem, that today this person says they're okay with it, and then somebody else buys the property, or somebody else, right. When suddenly they decide they're not, it's always a better course of action to get any permission in writing. And it should be an easement that follows the link.
So if you work with that homeowner, get an easement, talk about the vegetation, and then present it to us, and so on and so forth.
We should add that to the condition.
Yeah, that should be.
That becomes a number six.
And it's more so to protect you than?
No, I understand. Yeah. If they don't want anything, then it's a moot point. Is that essentially true? In other words, if we approach them and say, hey, you know, you know, we're offering to put three evergreens in, or in a mound, yada, 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 and they say, no, we don't want to do anything, if it's their property, right, we can't?
Does the city require headlight mitigation?
It was certainly part of the, well, let me see if it was part of the original.
And I'm not, I'm, we're certainly 100%.
If the city requires it, then it requires it regardless of.
I mean, I understand their point that they're making, that, you know, obviously it has to be in conjunction with the approval of the property owners. But I would be very surprised if they wouldn't want some sort of buffering there. It only.
Paul, what if the homeowner don't want anything there?
It's moot.
Then it's moot, okay.
They don't need any easement.
Okay, so that answers your question.
Thank you.
So we're back to five.
Any other issues with the conditions?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the architectural re-review, is that a public hearing, or is that an administrative review?
It would be.
It's a hearing here, but it's not a public hearing.
It's a public meeting.
Public meeting.
Okay, it's a public meeting.
But not a public hearing.
Okay. And will we be getting some guidelines on what exactly are going to be looking for as far as drawings, or renderings, or whatnot?
Color elevations.
Color elevations, okay. And what if?
Lifting materials.
Okay. If for some reason, between that exercise being accepted, and the church wants to change some things down the road, what process has to be gone through to have that happen?
You'd have to come back to the planning commission.
You gotta come back.
Okay.
The change is approved.
For another public meeting?
Public meeting, right.
That would be a public.
Body of ring, meeting.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, what's the pleasure?
Approval of five conditions, eliminating the existing fifth. And did we, we didn't really make?
Notification to number two.
Notification to number two, eliminating the five additional canopy trees, and that stating that the number of trees would meet the requirements of that section.
We also added the landscape for the, across the street from the entranceway.
Including, would be included within an easement in accordance with.
And what it's going to be.
Yes.
So that would be a sixth, then.
Well, that's, that's under, that's under item three.
Oh, okay, fine, fine, yes. Okay, so that is just.
Indicated.
Amending that, that an easement would be required, and that they define the proposal.
Okay. Ed, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Sisral?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
All right.
Oh, anyone request table, but don't vote on that?
Yeah, we want to.
Oh, yeah.
We need to take a vote on the architectural view coming back for.
Yeah, I'd like to table the architectural review, and you're going to come back with that.
We need to vote on that, yes.
And a motion. That was condition five.
Yes.
Ed, please call the roll.
Give me a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Sisral?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And under director's port, we need to, everybody got a chance to look at the 2021 meeting schedule. And anybody have an issue with it?
I have none.
None.
We're going to try to, we're going to vote to approve. Ed, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Sisral?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
All right. Kathy, do you have anything?
I do not.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.